All right, we'll start DPW board of commissioners meeting Tuesday, January 12th. Um, before we start, I want to just kind of give an update, COVID update, in particular with the department. We had an employee test positive. In the office, so that person as well as the other, everyone else inside the office. Has been quarantined following the proper protocol with the Board of Health and. The Fire Chief and, and you know, subsequent tests are scheduled for the individuals that were close contact. And, you know, in dealing with the person that did test positive. So currently the office is closed, there's no one in the office. You know, I heard we're going to be able to get some people up and running remotely, which would be good. Anything that can help, obviously. You know, running the crews, we'll have to talk to the foreman via, you know. Cell phones and, you know, communicate as best we can, but, uh, you know, it's nothing that nobody doesn't know, but it's getting worse. Numbers keep going up and up and up. Um, you know, I know at the town level that they've seen it. I'm sure everyone in their personal and or professional. You know, they've seen it. I know at our work, um, it's gotten real bad, you know. I don't think it's been a week since probably December 1st, we get some of that. I haven't had somebody out or close contact or something like that. So, um, I think it's, um, you know, important, uh, Bruce and Dennis to reaffirm it with the crews. And Bobby, on your end, you know, if you haven't already done it, you know, or continue to do it and, and masks and social distancing and. You know, um, you know, hopefully I did hear that they are starting to do, uh. Vaccines for the fire department, the police department, hopefully, uh, I'm wishful that other, you know, other municipal departments are shortly behind that. You know, in the next phase, you know, I did see some things that, you know, Public Works was listed. In, in the next phase as, um, you know, to get the vaccine. So, um, you know, but I think it's, it's, it's very important. We just keep. We affirming to everybody and everybody keeps, you know, doing the best they can. So we'll, um. Hopefully next week, Monday, we'll at least be able to have, um, people back in the office. I don't know if anybody else had any comments or.
Just a touch base on the, as far as vaccines for public works, uh, the Fire Chief did that send down a quest for us to. Make up a signup sheet for all the employees. So he could get an idea of numbers as far as how many vaccines he needed and. He anticipated that he would be vaccinating, um, DPW employees sometimes at the end of this month. But I think that's probably going to be backed up a week or two now, but we are on the agenda.
Mark, did you have something?
I was just going to say, we just got our dates too. I think we're going to be just about 10 days or so for the police department or somewhere around there. So.
DPW commissioner is part of the DPW?
I know a funeral director's on. Why wouldn't they be, right?
Not for nothing, you know what I mean? I just, I don't want to.
You're kind of a last responder.
But, you know, all serious, like I said, um, you know, we will, we'll still manage to operate, you know, the Dennis and Bruce and then. Continue to keep things moving and. You know, do the best we can. So. Um, so that's where we are. COVID wise. Um, so we have the minutes from the December 8th meeting that Amy sent out. And if there are no comments or concerns, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as. Written.
Accept the minutes as written?
Right, so we have a motion by Ken. Seconded by.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mark. Um, we'll do a roll call vote. Uh, Dave Cook?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yep.
Mark?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. The other, so under new business, uh, we got a couple items. So the special town meeting again, I don't know if anyone heard, but, um. Myself, Dennis and Bruce were on the selectmen's meeting last night and the selectman voted to postpone indefinitely the special town meeting. Obviously, again, COVID numbers are up. You know, the, as right now, the high school is closed. I think I just saw some emails that it is going to reopen sometime next week, but. You know, I, I understand the reasoning. Um, hopefully keep our fingers crossed that, um, you know, we don't have any issues. But, um, you know, that's been postponed and my guess is it. You know, it's probably going to be the regular May town meeting, just, um, you know, by the time numbers start coming down. You know, best case here into March sometime frame and it doesn't make sense to have a, I, I don't think, you know, a special time meeting in April and have a regular town meeting in May or something like that. Um, just with the timeframe, so.
How does that affect, uh, force main that we're going to be working on on Auburn Street then?
We can't, we can't bid it. So with that, we cannot advertise the bid. Um, you know, we can't advertise without funding approved. Um, so we'll continue with everything we're doing design wise and finalizing the documents and. Um, you know, getting it to that point. Um, and having the bid packages together. So once we do, or once we are able to have a town meeting. Hopefully we'll get approval and then we'll move forward with the bid. So. You know, if it goes to May, um, you know, we'd advertise, hopefully we get approval at a town meeting in May, we advertise middle of May. You know, award. Middle of June, end of June, um, we usually give at least a, a three week, three to four week timeframe for, you know, a bid this size. So, um. All we can do is keep our fingers crossed, you know, um. Uh, I haven't looked into that or asked about that. Um, we can certainly ask Ziad about that with the SRF funding. Um, I think as long as we start the project in the calendar year that it's approved. So, you know, we went for SRF funding and have that approval. You know, in the, in late 20 and I think the final list just is coming out about now for projects. And if I remember what Ziad said before, we can confirm within tonight, as long as you started within a, a year of that. You, you, you're fine, you know, so we have up to a year, but we can, uh. Confirm that. You know, it, it, it's just, you know, they asked me to like, oh, do you think the mains going to hold on? I said, I don't know. It could break tomorrow. It could never break.
We'll be the first to find out.
Yeah, you know. It, it's no different than a water line, you know, you don't know when it's going to break.
We'll cross off fingers, interest rates don't go up.
Yeah, right. I think those are some questions Ziad might be able to answer tonight too, if that SRF funding rate. Is, is locked in once you're approved. And again, as long as you, you know, start the project, we can, uh. We can speak to him about that, or we can even talk to, uh. You know, the collector's office and see what their thoughts, but you know, nothing we can do, like I said, it, it. You know. We probably already would have had a shovel on the ground if, you know, COVID didn't hit in March. It, it is one of those. No one's going to change it. So. Dennis and I talked a little bit and, and hope for discussion, you know, that the, obviously some of the reasons to push us through too was, um. You know, we don't want it, we don't want to break and then have to deal with, um, fines and, and things with DEP and CONCOMs and, and, um. I had made a suggestion to Dennis and I'm looking for feedback, you know, send a couple of letters out to Whitman, Concom, Brockton, Concom. Brockton Water and Sewer, just, you know, telling them where we're at, you know what I mean? We're, we're, we're going to, we would have been ready to bid. COVID just not allowing us to appropriate the funds, you know, and just kind of give them a heads up. So, you know, God forbid, something does happen. At least they understand the process. I don't know if anybody has any thoughts or comments on that.
And Mr. Chair, I was just going to throw out there, um, as far as documentation, do you feel, were you going to be recorded in the minutes from the selectmen? That you know of?
Yeah, I mean, it's, well, it's all, just like us, it's all recorded. I, I, you know, I would assume they, they take, you know, paper. You know, they record the minutes and, and like you said, like it's, I think it's already on the cable access from.
Fair of that. I was only asking, so if we, you thought we needed to send a letter, kind of documenting where we're at in the, uh, compromised position it puts us in, but. It's probably documented.
I was just thinking, you know, if, if, if a break happens, it's going to be the conservation commissions and, and or DEP. That will be levying any type of fines. So that was my only thought, just those type of boards, you know. You know, and Brockton Water and Sewer just has out of convenience. So obviously they're the. You know, the ones taking all the. All the sewage, so. You know, just information. I, I. So I don't know, you know, has any thoughts? I, I, I would like to proceed with it unless anyone thinks elsewise.
Oh, you're right. It just, you know, we don't have control. Uh, it's a significant delay for the reasoning. Uh. I'm hoping by May we all have our vaccine. Good to go way before then, but.
Cause the hope is too, we get into May, we can have it outside like we did before. Yeah, you know. Like we're going to find 20 people that are going to sit on the football, football field in January.
I'd vote for outside right now.
I, I would too, but. That did come up and then some of the conversations, but. But that's where we're at, you know, so, um, that got postponed. So that's the special time meeting. So then the other small article we had. Obviously gets, uh, pushed as well, where we're going to be transferring the funds from the rain or app project to the hot memorial. So. Again, we'll, we'll just table that to the next time meeting. So Amy, you had some abatements and or commitments? Is that, do we have any or is that just on here as a placeholder?
Hi, yep, I do have a couple. Um, I didn't, wasn't able to get them over to you because of, um, not being in the office today. Um, but there are two. One is for five Edward Drive. It's an abatement for $202.50 for just sewerage. Uh, we overestimated it and this was found out on a, we just did a final, uh, sewer for closing.
So they must have well water, I would guess.
They have well water, yes.
They look at the entire $202 and whatever like change refunded.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is that a motion, Ken?
No, not really. I was just asking a question, but I'll make a motion that we approve the abatement.
All right, so a motion by Ken?
Seconded.
Seconded by Wayne. All favor Dave?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Mark? You're mute. Mark, you're mute.
See your lips moving?
Yeah, yes.
Ken, you can read my lips.
Yeah, I read his lips. Typical Lance Av kid.
Wow, wow. Ken, yes, and I'm a yes. All right, so abatements all set. And you had a second one, Amy?
Yep, there's one more. It's for 50 Belmont Street. Um, it was another one of the ones that was double billed from the meter change in March. Uh, the abatements for $155.66 for water and $96.62 for sewer.
Okay, so questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept.
Motion to accept is read.
Seconded.
Right, motion by Wayne, seconded by Ken, Dave?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yep.
Mark?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So obviously Amy, we're not going to be able to sign those till sometime next week when the office is back open.
Right, yep, I'll leave them on the table for when we do open backup.
Okay. All right, so I got 6:15.
Right on the money.
I see Peter. Good, good evening, Peter.
Good evening.
Let me see. All right, so. Need to make a motion to go into executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Paragraph 21A3. To discuss strategy with respect to clearly in, indemnically. Threatened and destruct this demonstrably likely litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental effects on the bargaining litigation position of the public body in chair, so declares. So if someone.
Motion for exactly what you said.
Yes, a motion by Ken, seconded by.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dave. We'll take a roll call vote to go into executive session. Dave?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
All right, so I'm going to need Bobby. I need you to. Drop off. All right, so we're back recording, so we're back in, uh, open session. Dennis, were you, um, going to send us a text? There he is. Wow, we couldn't have planned that any better.
Yeah, see.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ziad. How you doing?
Good, timing is good.
Yes.
Um, Ziad, if you, I just want to give a little history over the last couple of weeks, I guess, and then, um, we'll go through your agenda. Um, I, I think you're aware that the special time meeting got postponed indefinitely. So obviously, um, you know, we'll continue with what we're doing design wise, but, um, getting everything ready. And, you know, we were talking early with the board that my thoughts are, it's probably going to just be the May. You know, there's not a lot of time now and then, and, and it's just going to go to the May and we'll keep our, keep our fingers crossed, you know.
Yeah, I understood. I, um, I also have, you know, and I kind of knew this was coming, kind of Dennis kept me in the loop. And, uh, the, uh, really the only issue that would impact the schedule is the, uh. The SRF funding and we do have some information on that. We could discuss that, uh, more in detail and, uh. You know, we may have some limitations this year. I was told. Yesterday from SRF that they have over $1 billion in asks was, which was very unheard of. So, you know, often in the past, if somebody is looking for funding for a project. Uh, you put in the PF application and then all of a sudden, you know, it's almost guaranteed that you're going to get the funding, right? So we'll talk about that a little bit. I think it's on the agenda. Let me see, I, I did forward you the, uh, agenda early on, but I'll share my screen so that way we all look at it the same thing.
Yeah, so, so just the other thing, um, Dennis and myself, um, met with the. Facilities and capital improvements committee the other night, last Thursday, just to talk about the project and get them up to speed. Um, we've asked Ziad to supply, um. Couple more documents on, um. Uh, you know, where the, the backup and things like that on the cost estimates and. You know, we discussed with them, um, you know, the funding and it's going to be, uh, increase the rates and, um. That's something I, I do want to talk about as well, um, after, after Ziad. Um, about rates and then something we might want to look at now that, um, special time meetings postponed. But we met with them, we gave them some information, they had some questions, um, they ultimately did take a vote. Um, on the warrant article, you know, that they would approve the warrant article. Again, this is before the meeting was canceled. Um, but they did approve the warrant article. Ziad, there was a request, uh, from the chairman, um, for you to, they asked if you could attend one of their meetings, you can, um. I'll, I'll forward you the email and we can talk, um. You know, they may not have any more questions once we give them a little more information, but, um. You know, I'll, I'll send you some of their dates and we can see if that's. Feasible or, you know, may not be needed after they get some of the additional information.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, Kevin. I, I did, uh, just before five o'clock, I sent, uh, the entire group with the exception of Mark, I think. I, I sent the group the, uh. Narrative as to how we arrived to the cost estimate. Um, and, and the letter, uh, to accompany that. So, but I'll be more than happy to, uh, attend if this is required, required. So, you know, basically, you know, force mains, as we all know, they don't come around that often. Uh, I've been. Uh, involved with three force main ruptures and repairs and replacement for the, since 2016. They're all kind of similar size, similar alignment, plus or minus length. Uh. You know, one of them is kind of a little bit of an outlier. It's on Nantucket, uh, everything costs maybe twice as much on Nantucket than, than, than it does here. Uh, of course, all these costs are taken into account. Uh, you know, basically. My experience, uh, and what I've seen in this market for horizontal construction, your, your price is going to be very competitive, especially in this bidding environment. Uh, a foot of pipe, whether it's a 20 inch or 24 inch plastic, uh, whether it's PVC or HDP pipe is going to be around 200. Uh, from 200 to $220 per linear foot every day of the week. Um, you know, you carry some contingency in there and then, um, some assumptions based on unforeseen conditions. But, uh, overall, I think the numbers are the numbers and, uh, and I think if you, when you take a look, when you have a chance, take a look at the, uh. Uh, document that I sent just about five o'clock this afternoon, I think, uh, it is, uh. A pretty comprehensive, you know, the quantities are based on cat takeoff. Uh, the only thing that really happened, um, that is different, when we generated the estimate, we shared it, uh, in the past. Uh, we had less quantities on horizontal drilling because we didn't think it was required. We only thought. Excuse me, in the stretch, uh, under the, uh. Unnamed stream, then the perennial stream, uh, within the easement there and Barack and behind Massasoit, we thought maybe 300 feet. Would be a good approach to, to shoot the pipe by drilling, uh, that way we not going through a serious. You know, serious permitting hopes, uh, but then again, uh, you know, based on recent development and working with DEP through the MIPA program. And the solid waste in, uh, Southeast, uh, the, going through the landfill in Brockton required us to add. Maybe six or 700 additional feet by drilling just because of the geomembrane and because of the cap. On the existing landfill, that really didn't impact, uh, the overall cost. I mean, we still, uh, base bid. And I'd be happy to share this on, on, on the screen here, but the base bid and bid alternate, basically that would be putting a new pipe in. Cleaning, draining this pipe, uh, flushing it CCTV it and some assumptions just because of the unknown there. Uh, we don't really know exactly the extent of the damage inside the pipeline. We had assumed about a thousand. Linear feet of CIPP lining, which is a cured and placed liner, um, and then another, another thousand feet of full replacement. So I think the quantity is about, uh, you know, 2,000 feet, uh, slightly over 12, 13% of the entire force man alignment. So that would get you, uh, a force man to, uh. To act as a redundant pipe, uh, or stand by just in case, uh, you know, uh, something happens to this one. So you, you'd have two pipes and I think overall cost, including contingency and design, uh, not design, but construction phase services. About 14,600,000 and I think you're asking for about 16 for the whole package. And of course, if, if the cost, like I said, I think I truly believe that the, the bidding market today is very competitive and. Uh, we're going to have a lot of people chasing this force name when, when it becomes available on the street there. With that, uh, I hope you see the agenda here on, on the screen, on my screen. You guys see it, right?
Yeah, we can see it.
Thank you.
It's a little large, but, uh, you can see it.
It's, is it large or is it not large?
It is on, uh. It looks like it's 200% or something.
Yeah, do you want me to decrease the?
I, I don't, if you scroll, it's fine. Thank you.
So the old eyes, I guess. No, I have it on, on my larger screen so I could see it, but, uh.
Wow, that's it. I need one of those.
Yeah, uh, so. Uh, last, uh, last month, we, uh, we kind of went through the, uh, it was a more of a presentation on the, on the preliminary design, you know, we're done. With the preliminary design, we kind of, uh, based on the discussion that we had last month, I took the comments, we blended into the, you know, we made the adjustment based on. The, uh, virtual meeting that we had and the comment that I got from you at the time, uh, when we went through the, uh, the plan set. So, uh, after that, uh, I did reach out to the gas company, which is EverSource. And we were hoping that EverSource would say, okay, you know, we have an opportunity here. We have a gas main that is, uh, over 60 years old. Or 70 years old that is on Southfield Drive. It is kind of close to the alignment that we were proposing the, the force main. And oftentimes when you, uh, call the utility company, say, hey, you know, we, we're going to be digging here. So if you want to replace your, uh, gas main, just kind of move it a little bit out of the way, give us a little bit of a. Room to, uh, maneuver. Uh, so we gave them that opportunity and they kind of went back and forth. Uh, it's unfortunately not on their capital planning. We pushed, we pushed, we pushed, we didn't really get anywhere with them. So, um. Unfortunately, what, what's going to happen is during the, uh, construction of this force man on Southfield specifically, uh, they're going to have somebody on site. To, um, monitor, to kind of observe the, uh, the operation, that would be no cost to the town, it's just on their own dime. Um, and then in case something happens to the pipeline, you're an excavation backfill, so on and so forth, at least they'll have an eye on it there. But in terms of, uh, our force main alignment, the new one, it's going to be very tight and it's probably going to slow the, uh, the progress of the installation, but I don't think we have a choice. Uh, Southfield, if you look, uh, it has a fairly large right away, but there's like a ton of utilities in there. So you got water, you got sewer, you got rain. You got a force main that belongs to Brockton, 18 inch force main, you got the 20 inch force main, um, owned by Whitman. And of course now we're going to put in another force main, uh, parallel to it. So it, it is going to be tight. There'll be, uh, sections on Southfield. Uh, where we're thinking that perhaps we could, uh, offset the, uh, new pipe. We will put the new pipe slightly above the old pipe, but we offset them in the trench. So both will be accessible.
So, yeah, so you had a question on that, on the, on the gas. Did they, um, memorialize that in some type of document or? Something that would, you know, I'm sure we can note it in the bid spec, but is there any? Official kind of agreement that they say, hey, you know, they have to have inspections, they have to have someone there, you know, more than just noting it as a, in, in the bid document, you know?
It is an email and I will include, um, I could request the, um. The information from, uh, EverSource to be more official, to be a, an appendix in the bid document, if you will. If that, I think that makes more sense.
Yeah, yeah, it's something from them officially. Yeah, just to.
Absolutely. I kind of took also into consideration the, uh, the, uh. Flow meter, uh, based on Dennis, the recommendation Dennis had, uh, the point that he brought up at that meeting there. So we moved the flow meter further down to kind of incorporate the flows coming from the three stations. The Auburn Street and then the other, uh, two satellite facilities along the alignment. So, uh, I think the, uh, the, uh, preliminary design is complete. Uh, we started to, uh, advance the, the, uh, design document to include specifications. Because in the preliminary design, we only had a table of contents, but now we have a full document basically that we could, we could follow. The only difference. The only difference is if we go the, uh, Clean Water Trust through the SRF program. The bid package had to adhere to their, um, standards. In other words, you have the diesel retrofit. There's the, uh, the, uh, front end section, a section of the specification would have to be, uh, consistent with the, uh, SRF program. And then of course they have the, uh, the federal wage rates that would kind of supplement the state wage rates, the, uh. Again, the diesel retrofit program, there's a checklist that we have to kind of abide by it. And of course, if, uh, this is only true if we go on the SRF route. If we not go on the SRF route, we kind of want to, you know, flush that out of the, uh, the specification and just make them like, uh, you know, standard. You know, uh, bid document like you see without an SRF, uh, header on it. Uh, speaking of SRF, uh, I think it's a little further down the road. I don't want to skip here, but, uh, again, the permitting, uh, that was a big portion of this thing. Uh, this is a summary. What we have in hand today, we have the, uh, notice of intent. This is a summary. What we have in hand today, we have the notice of intent that came from the Whitman Conservation Commission. We have the approved notice of intent that came from Brockton. This was continued once and then we got it the second time. No issues there. There's some conditions that they added and those conditions. Usually I've seen those done in, you know, wetland settings where when this job is all complete, they want certain restoration along the the cross country piece of the force main. They want a wetland scientist to do a biannual inspection and, you know, do an assessment whether the restoration took. Certain seeds kind of took or kind of, you know, didn't. So this is a, you know, some additional requirement that was done that was included in the order of condition that came from Brockton. On the US Army Corps of Engineers, we we submitted, we had the initial submittal back in November, November 3. We had a follow up call with them. Excuse me. They they needed some additional information. We supplied the information on December 9. And unfortunately, there is a review period that is 60 days with US Army because, you know, they claim they're understaffed and that's what the review period is like. So 60 days from 12 9, we're probably looking at, you know, sometimes next month, we should hear back from the US Army. The Mass Historic Commission, we submitted on October and was approved in November. No issues there. MIPA, we talked about it last time. We did receive the certificate for the ENF. So there's no environmental impact report that was required. So we were good, good enough with the ENF. On the 401, this came during the MIPA review. We didn't think we exceeded the thresholds for 401 water quality certification. But during the MIPA review period and comments, somebody from VP came back and said, yep, you you need to file a 401 water quality certification, which we did. And I think it's a same thing. The unfortunately, review period, they give you up to 90 days, but I've seen. I just did one for Plymouth. Maybe a couple of months ago, it was, you know, we got it back within 45 days. So we submitted this on just before Christmas and there's 90 days and really it's not going to impact the design. We'll continue proceeding with the final design while we wait for the for the other permits to commit. Also, part of the MIPA review meeting that we had, the solid waste group from the Southeast region came back and said, OK, you're going through a landfill. Municipal landfill that's already capped. There's a geomembrane on this landfill. And, you know, the capping really only consists of, you know, a drainage sand layer and a vegetative layer. And what they're worried about is the approaches are OK. They're OK with the with the way we we're doing it, but they're concerned that somebody could be digging seven or eight or 10 feet below grade. And the gases coming out could be overwhelming. So it's a health and safety issue. And, you know, they wanted us to, and because we, the landfill was capped, we had to file a it's an SW 37, it's post closure, minor modification to an existing facility. So I did that and we submitted this just last week. And of course, we have to get Brockton involved because it is on by Brockton after all, and then they they are the operator, they have, we require their signature. So. So the only two then to summarize the the permitting, the outstanding items of the the minor facility modification for the landfill and the 401 water quality certification and of course, the Army Corps permit, which is, you know, we should be seeing the results from them or the response from them within a month or so. So on the State Revolving Fund, we submitted the PF application August 2020. The intended use plan. So basically, they, everybody who is looking to fund their project through the SRF program, they submit before August of the the previous year. And, you know, the SRF, the trust basically looks at all the applications and sometimes in January, they vote on, they look at how much money they have and which projects are priorities and which projects they want to fund. This year, as I mentioned early on, they got, and a lot of it really is a request from PFAS. It's the on the water side, right? So PFAS is a big hot ticket item today, and I think usually what they do is you know, they they do for the clean water on the sewer side, they they provide more funding than, you know, traditionally than than on the water side. But this year, I think they're going to switch the order around a little bit. So that said, you know, there's no guarantees that you could be selected. Your project could be selected. So I think we'll know in by the end of January, but then keep in mind that even if you don't get selected, there's a chance that somebody might might drop out. And then all of a sudden, you you know, you come up, you know, on that, on that list, and it all depends. I mean, the timing is everything and maybe in retrospect, if town meeting is pushed off till May, maybe it's not a bad thing. Because that way, one, you know, whether you're going to get funded through the SRF program. And if you're not, that would give you enough time to, you know, go and then get some, look at different fund funding alternatives. So for the SRF program, the going rate is about 2%. We discussed a lot last time, if you're a housing choice community, that rate can become one and a half percent most likely. And then, of course, with the SR program, there is a portion of that principle, which is forgiven based on median household income and the census information that that they have on file. So let's wait and see, maybe on the next update, we will have a much better understanding whether we, and I think just because of the 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 traffic on the on the request this year and the $1 billion ask, they may push the IUP results. Instead of coming out in January, that could, they could push them into February a little bit. But as soon as I know, I will keep you posted. I'll let you know.
We we did look into the housing choice. Actually, one of the selectmen brought it up at the meeting last week and it sounds like he's starting the process, but we're you know, we're not in, he estimated 18 to 24 months to even be accepted and then you'd have to take the next step. So that's not feasible, at least for this project, maybe down the line if you know, he's successful in that application, but but that was looked into.
So if you, if we do get selected, if we make the IUP list and you want to go and certainly the SRF route, you know, the only, so what what the next step would be, the town appropriation. So in other words, you know, you you vote the the project at town meeting and then you have, it is a go. We need to submit the information over to a construction stage long application through the SRF program before August. So just because now, if everything goes according to plan and you you know, the project gets funded at town meeting in the spring, the earliest you could start this project, if you don't, would be September, October of 2021. This is the earliest you could do it. But that that is the process at this point. And of course, what we could do, if we make the list, there's nothing that's going to prevent us from sending the plans and specs to to the Clean Water Trust, because what they need to do, they need to review and give you one, first give you the permission to advertise, and then once you advertise and then you go out to bid, they'll also give you the permission award and they'll start the you know, the loan process, you know, after you have the appropriation of town meeting. We talked about the housing choice and now again, looking ahead. Because of the permitting, I really wanted to submit the basis of design report with the preliminary design, but I thought it was really warranted because I wasn't sure where the solid waste group is going to go with the landfill, just because of the implications to to the methodology at which we installed this pipeline. And now that we, you know, once the all the permits are in hand, I I am looking to submit the basis of design report to you by the end of this month. So that way, we kind of pin down exactly what we're putting in. We already determined the size of the pipe. We determined the material of the pipeline components and features along the force man alignment. We talked about restoration on Auburn. Restoration on Southfields only limited to the trench. We're not really doing anything else unless somebody else comes back and said, we have to do that. And then just everything really is, you know, already determined, nothing is, at this point, nothing in the design is going to change. So we should be able to submit to you the basis of design report. And I think I'd like to do is you know, get the the plans. I'm putting the warnings on the plans right now, all the features on the plans and give you a set. You know, give you like a set about a week or two weeks for review and then maybe we'll catch up. We do a design review on a virtual call, if that makes sense.
So on the SRF, we were talking before you came on. You know, if we're accepted and you know, what's the like you said, it would be June, you know, probably July, August for start. Do I remember, was it a year that you had to start the project? You know?
Yes, you have a year, but then they have been very flexible now because of COVID and all the stuff that's going on. I have a very similar situation. I'm doing a force main on Nantucket and we're supposed to have a contractor on board by June 1, 2021. And because Nantucket shut down for months, you know, we we're going to be late finalizing the design and going through the SRF. They got it approved from last year. It is on the books, like 32 million or something like that, but it is on the books. And when I did reach out to SRF, they said, no problem. We could just push it off a month, two, three months, whatever you need.
OK, so so we're not in jeopardy of, if we get approved, we wouldn't lose it. You know, we still, and maybe we got a pretty good comfortable window, you know, that we'd still be starting it and, you know, summertime, early fall, the latest.
Absolutely.
Does anyone have any questions for Ziad or where we're at? I didn't have a chance to go through your estimate. We can go through that and we can exchange emails if I have any questions. As far as the the other members that what Ziad sent out tonight, I'd like to share with the facilities, capital improvements, once, you know, everyone takes a few days to review it. Any questions, you know, anything we need to add to you know, modify or whatever. You know, maybe end of this week, early next week, we'll we'll make that available to that committee so they can have it for their files.
Kevin, can you forward that to me? Mark, can you forward that to me? I didn't get that.
OK, did you? I thought I did tonight. Maybe it didn't go. Did you get a couple of things to me tonight? Take a look.
I think the only person I didn't send send it to was Mark.
Yeah, I forward both. I I thought I did, Mark. Maybe I cut and paste it wrong because it was the, it was the agenda.
I'm looking now. I'll let you know. It was two separate emails. It was an agenda and then the other document had the cost estimate. It's really one, you know, what I did, I combined them. It's a base bid and an alternate. You could see how the breakdown happens at the bottom. And then, and then there is a cover letter that kind of basically describes the justification how we arrived to this. And then in the cost estimate on the right hand column, there's a comment box also explaining where the numbers came from. And full disclosure, if you look at the very bottom there, I mean, it's, I think it's, I kind of rounded up to the $2 or $3. It wasn't like, it's not to the penny.
It's OK. Amy, can I ask you to forward Mark's contacts?
I I got that, Kevin, by the way.
OK, all right. Well, we'll get the, we'll get your info to Ziad. That way you're in the, you know, as you send stuff out, you you get a lot.
Yeah, I'll send that over to Ziad tomorrow. Once I can get into the work laptop, having some difficulty at the moment, still logging in, but I will get there tomorrow.
Thank you. Ziad, just one question. The so we have the alternate for the the existing main and to clean it and, you know, and then we can decide whether we want to or reuse it. But I guess at a minimum, we're going to have to do something to it. You know, so we have four or five items under the bid alternate, you know, clean and CCTV contingency for heavy cleaning, dispose of excess material. We're going to have to clean it out regardless, right? You know, so is the alternate really just if we want to refurbish it or or does the other items already have that in it?
No, I mean, you know, honestly, to be, I don't think you need to do anything with that force man. You could just simply abandon a capital place. But usually what people want to do is at a minimum drain it. And because of the alignment is not such that you could, you know, basically let it go back into the wet well because we have lots of intermediate high points and low points. So I think what you do is you you drain it the best you can and then you go into these slow points. And they have like, like a quick connect, like a four inch blow off at the bottom of the manhole. And then you go with a vector truck and then you get all the flows out of it now. And that's sufficient. You could certainly do that with minimal cost. Cut the pipe, cap it, and then abandon it in place. You don't have to really do anything with it. I think what the value of having a a another force main, in other words, let's just say, let's say these numbers are, you know, within they're kind of possible, like, you know, the 1000, the 2000 feet that we assumed, you know, 1000 feet for CIPP lining and the other 1000 for replacement are adequate. You know, that would give you the the opportunity to have a a second force man. Like today, we, you know, Nantucket did the same thing. They they had two force man, one of them was determined, which is gone. Yeah, you know, goes back to 1930 and it wasn't wide upon. And they said, OK, we can't really simply live with one force man. You know, 20, 20,000 linear feet. So they decided they just put a redundant force man. They could use either or. Plymouth exactly did the same thing. Needham did the same thing. Framingham was looking at a couple of spots, doing the same exact thing. So it is almost a practice today to have, you know, not to rely on one pipe, but 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 to have two. And because you have the infrastructure already in place and the cost comparatively, like, you know, let's say you could do the whole thing for like a million six, like we say here. Maybe it is worth the effort. And if you don't want to do it, I mean, you don't have to. I don't think you, you could just simply drain it, cap it and just abandon it in place for minimum cost. And if you notice here in the cost estimate, you know, actually what when you start taking the solids out of this pipeline, what you do is you're going to have to, you know, you're running through a screen, you're de-watering, but the actual solids, you have to kind of ship them off to a landfill. And usually like either the Bourne landfill or some other landfill that would take that type of material and it becomes costly because the the solids, you know, cost about $90 per ton.
So my question, is that, say, the minimal amount that we have to do? Is that in the base bid? Is there enough?
No, the minimal amount you'd have to do perhaps would be just drain it back in the wet well and hire source or somebody under change order to the contractor, but we could certainly do that. But I think if we want to do this, we probably have to do it as a bid alternate, right? Because you're not going to do.
You're not going to do both, right? So that's what I'm saying. Yeah, I'd much rather have the numbers upfront. Certainly, anyone on the board can weigh in as well. But, you know, you have it up front. We have the adult A and adult B and then A is we we make it, make it safe for lack of other terms, get all the, get everything out of it. Clean it, dispose of it. Alternate B is we're going to reuse it. And we have the numbers and we can pick and choose.
Yeah, and you're right. You have to go with the to be to be able to award. You can't jump from, so B has to be alternate A has to be smaller than B, right? Because you can't jump to to be. You can't pick and choose. You have to go with the next one. So I think the way I would structure this bed would just go with the basement the way we have it. Alternate A would be simply to do the bare minimum. And then alternate B would be to to do the full scope that we we say here under the alternate. Does that make sense?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. I mean, like I said, the change orders always cost money.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
More money than bid. So let's get the numbers up front. And then you know.
Is there a, do you have like a contractual agreement with source or maybe One River or somebody like that to to come in and do service to the force main or back back to the force main? That's one way to probably do it, too.
I don't think so. I defer to Dennis if Dennis knows.
Say that again, Ziad. Do you have, Dennis, do you have a contract agreement with like source or? Do you have, Dennis, do you have a contract agreement with like source or uh, Wind River or somebody like that to uh? To come in like vector the wet well or maybe vector the uh, the force man from low points?
No, we don't, we don't have a standing contract with anybody. We, we um. Have due board pumping services out of um, Bridgewater. Um, there've been um, I just got him started on a three month. Um, wrote, or four month rotation of cleaning our, uh, you know, the pump stations that we have problems with. And um, they seem to be working out well, but. It's just, we just basically have them on call.
Yeah, I mean, I, I will do it. I will uh, restructure the, the bid tab to, to have these two bid alternates, for sure.
Then we have everything, we can make decisions later. Anyone, any of the members have any questions? I think we're good. Uh, I was at some question and I was gonna. Send your way and then you can share with Ziad if you want, or you might have the answer. Nothing major, nothing.
Just, I guess one question on that. The road in Southfield. On Brockton, are we gonna, are they gonna, is the uh? The quote have um. If we did have to pave that from curb to curb, or is that? Is that, we have no idea on that.
Uh, we, we discussed it with the, with the uh, board, I think uh, last time or the previous time and the thought processes. So everywhere on the, let's say we're on Auburn Street, right? We go in there, you saw cut. Uh, you know, you, you, you dig, you put the force man in, you backfill. After you backfill, you put in this temporary paving, because you want to make it passable, right? Because. It's got traffic, you got things of that nature. So you, you make, you, you put in a two inch of uh, temporary paving. And then you come back after some time and you scrape off the two inches and you put an actual four, uh, I think we have five and a half inches of permanent pavement. And then you wait for the settlement period, when the project is done, you come back, you mill. Curb to curb and then you overlay the whole thing by one and a half inch. Well, we have talked about last time and because it is Brockton. Uh, you know, we figured, okay, why pave uh, curb to curb? Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we decided to just do the, the permanent trench only, right?
I, I think that was, yeah, where we ended up, um, you know, unless Brockton mandates something else and it doesn't sound like they are. Um, I, I think as long as we can protect ourselves and bid spec. You know, that um. Um, I, is there any? Any process with Brockton DPW as far as getting approval? Um, is there like a, you know, I know the city boss now has like the pick committee. You know, that they'll review the project and say, well, yes, you can just pave the trench or no, we want. Full width, you know, um. You know, a lot of times with the utility and that's what we are in this, we're utility, the towns. Always mandate, you know, we just did it with, with the gas company up on Route eighteen, we said, no, we don't want a trench, you know, we want half the road paved, so. Is there anything like that that we have to do with Brockton?
With Brockton, we've been uh, keeping them in the loop uh, at every turn. Uh, Dennis and I, we've been, you know, emails and communication, we offer to uh. You know, they, they were part of the MIPA uh, uh, review uh, meeting that have like forty, fifty people on there. So they kind of reached out and uh, they wanted to know the locations of the uh, air release valves, the manholes, the blow offs and all that. And we offered a couple different times to uh, to kind of walk them through a design review, virtual design review and I, you know. Uh, Patrick Hill uh, and Brockton, he's been very helpful, um, you know, when I need information, he, he supplies it like the S Bill drawings on. Southfield and all that neighborhood there. But they, they said not at this time, they haven't uh, you know, um. They haven't, just, you know, they said, no, none of this time, we don't need to sit down and review, but we'll, we'll let you know when we're ready. Uh, I think the idea here is to, you know, show this is what we're doing. I mean, this is a seven foot, uh, five foot and seven foot permanent trench. Based on the depth of the pipeline and this is what you're probably gonna get, you know, sock up the pavement and. Save the trench and if there, if we have to come back and do it, I think the mixed quantities have about a ten percent loss in there. Uh, it's about two thousand linear feet, uh, you know. I think that's out of the contingency.
Well, yeah, I did, I think the, the project spec, we can protect ourselves as much as possible, you know? Usual, any, any areas damaged outside of, you know, I shown the drawings, you know, responsibility contractor. Et cetera, et cetera, you know, as much as. As much as we can.
Absolutely, and frankly, I think, I don't think the condition of the roadway on Southfield is that great. Uh, you could see a lot of the uh. Uh, pavement is unraveling pretty much, um. So we'll, we'll see. I mean, you know, when you dig down that deep and then you're uh. Six or seven feet deep and you put in a twenty four inch or twenty inch down there, that trench becomes that much wider.
Uh, I would say that the condition of Southfield is similar to the Berries.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Well, let's just try to protect ourselves as a town as much as possible and, and. You know, and then. I'll ultimately have that review with Brockton and see what they say. Well, this, this will all be units, right? Because yeah, this will be a unit. Maybe some months for de-watering and stuff, but the bulk of it will be units.
Everything is uh, you know, like uh, the, the watering is a lump sum. Mobilization is a lump sum, everything else is a unit line item. And then, of course, if we have a contingency in there to uh. You know, if you need a asbestos, uh, if you hit asbestos concrete pipe, whether it's crushed or is, uh, if it's intact, there's a cost differential for each. There's an asbestos management plan, if you, if you had, if you had contaminated soil with asbestos, uh. And we have a good contingency there, good numbers, those are kind of hard to predict, so we put on allowance, right? Uh, and then uh. And then everything else is just line item. On paving, uh, the way I have it broken down is by the square yard. Uh, you know, milling is about the square yard. Uh, you know, paving is also whether it's a. It, it's uh, scaled, in other words, if you're doing temporary paving based on two inches, so much per square yard, if you're doing a four inch or five and a half inch. And one and a half inches price is different. But basically the contract, the way we show it today, all of Auburn gets paved. Uh, all of it and then uh, and then Tetra, uh, Tetra Street and then little segment there and then the uh. Southfield was just permanent trench.
Okay, what about uh? What about that little street? What's it uh? Little street and you, off of twenty seven?
Alger?
Yeah, Alger, yeah.
Yeah, um, I, I know, every, everything else aside from uh, Auburn is all uh. So actually, Alger, we're not really, we, we only cross thing, there's not a whole lot there to, to cross, it's just that. We're going across, right?
Right, so you're going underneath, you're not, you're not gonna.
No, we, we'll pave it. I mean, we only go in a uh, the width of the road for the trench, we only did, paving that, that's it.
Thanks, I just, I end up getting dropped off there for part of it, but. I uh. I get, I get the picture now, so obviously the trench that we do in uh, Southfield will be better than what the road they have now, so.
Yeah, you're, you're right there.
You know, I just thought of something, sorry. I have a question on the. In the specs, do we address winter conditions at all, since now we're headed into the? Last part of the end of the year, do they just stop or, you know, or do we actually uh?
I uh.
Support them, trying to keep going.
No, Dave, I think in my mind, I'm thinking this is a, a one year project and, you know, most likely they'll finish in less than a year, but uh. You know, let's say you start in uh, September, uh, you know, sometimes you take that little break in the winter because, you know, whether it's the holidays or perhaps. Uh, you got a situation where you have frost and you can't really move that much.
Right.
You know, you, you're not in a uh. You know, you could take, you could take a couple weeks off, three weeks off and then come back when, when the weather permits, but uh, you know, we, we gotta give them a twelve months to complete this work. From start to finish. Unless you guys think otherwise.
No, I think we were hoping it would be less if they started in the spring, but uh. Anyway. Yeah, I think it's, yeah, it, I think if you're starting in the fall, the twelve months probably still works, because then you're coming into your finished pavement. In the fall, you know, we still have some delays and we're starting the project in October, November. Then, then we may have to look at, you know, a little longer project or something, you know, because obviously we, we won't be. We won't, don't want to be finished paving in, you know, November.
So uh, the good thing about this project honestly is, i- it's not a gravity sewer, so you don't really have to start from point, point A. Point A and then work towards your point B. You could have two crews, right? Uh, you, you could have a crew uh, in easement, um, and then another crew on Auburn. You could, you know, you could have three crews if you want to, depending on the contractor, how much horsepower he has and. And uh, how he wants to approach this project. But, you know, I think a year is, is good, um, you know, it, it's, it's not, it's. You know, if you've been in this project and then you look, okay, I've got a year, you're not gonna be scrambling, throwing money and then see, you know. Have a large contingency, because you know you're gonna be able to do it in a year.
Okay, well, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'd say everyone, you know, you got the estimates, any, you know, um. Questions, whatever, certainly reach out to Ziad, just copy. You know, the board so everyone can kind of see and um. You know, we're not asking the same question two, three times and. Once I see kind of, that's all slowed down and Ziad supplied, um, you know, any comments or changes will um. I distribute that to. The Capitals facilities. There, dock it. All right, Ziad, I think we're good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good night.
Have a good night.
It's not on the agenda, but it's water sewer related, so um. One, one thing that did come up when we were talking the other night with facilities, capital improvement, you know, was the. You know, oh, you're gonna raise the rate all at once and we're like. Yeah, we don't have a choice, you know, I mean, we have to be able to have the funding. And um, I thought after knowing that town meeting's probably gonna get. Postponed, which it did. Do we do a small increase now? And start banking some money? Um, the project's gonna happen, it has to happen. Um, I'll, I'll put it out there, we can discuss it at the next meeting, we'll put it on the agenda. You know, we're talking an overall three dollar increase. Um, to fund the project, um. You know, we're gonna pay a note of almost a million dollars a year. You know, do we want to look at? You know, some, some amount now and just start banking a little bit of money, just to lessen the. You know, the, the, it's still three dollars or whatever the number is, but um. You know, lessen a little bit instead of all at once, so I guess I'll uh. I'll put that out to the board, you can think about it, Velf, you know, if anyone has any comments now, we'll take it, but um. I'd like to take it up at the next meeting and, and, you know, if it's acceptable or we come up with something, I think that might be a. Um, a viable thing to do, you know, hindsight's twenty twenty, I thought about it, you know, maybe we should have, you know. You know, two, a, you know, year ago, maybe upped it a little bit and upped it again. Started banking some of that money, so. It all goes into, you know, retained earnings, that's what we're gonna pay out all the bills from. So just um. Certainly, if anyone wants to talk about it now, I will, but um, I, I definitely would like to. Talk about it a little more and then possibly even vote something the next meeting.
It's a question, Kevin. Whoop, go ahead.
I'm always gonna say was Kevin is that, uh, so I've looked into this a little bit and. I'm, I'm pretty sure that as a public utility, we have to allow a thirty day public comment. Period.
Okay. Yeah, so you know, we, when's April is billings?
Uh, April fifteenth will be the, 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 the next billing, yes.
Alright, so, so we could.
Still squeeze it in, yes.
Yeah, we still squeeze it in. I think it's just a thought, you know, I guess, Ken, you had a.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you, Kevin, is that a three dollars for water and sewer combined or is it three dollars each? Three dollars on sewer?
Yeah, it's just gonna be on the sewer, to, to fund the project, we just need to do it on the sewer. And, and Dennis has put together a lot of good information that we're gonna have with us. Um, you know, for a town meeting, we'll still obviously need it at some point and um. You know, average costs to do, the average homeowner, things like that, you know, kind of typical numbers like that, it, it's about two hundred and fifty dollars a year. Do an average home. You know, but that all, I mean, that's based off the sixteen million and, and the funding for that at. Two percent. You, you know, and then if. You know.
Be more than the water bill then each uh, month, already every six months, whatever. I think it breaks down.
Yes.
Yes.
By, yes, by twenty five percent.
Okay.
Which, which most towns are more in sewer, most, most bills are more in sewer than they are water.
Yeah, I remember you saying that, Dennis.
So Amy, if you could put it on the agenda for next time, um. You know, increase the water, uh, increase the sewer rate, we'll keep it specific to sewer, because it's gonna be for this project.
Okay.
I'd like to talk about it a little more and get the thought of the board if uh. That makes sense to. Lessen the initial, you know, one time impact.
One time impact or just uh, look to, like you said, we're not gonna be doing anything till September, like.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, if, if we went to town meeting in, in January. You know, at our February meeting, we would have had a vote in a three dollar increase to sewer, roughly. So I'm saying is, maybe we bump it up a dollar now and, and so on, instead of you getting hit with a. What's like a thirty percent increase? I don't know the exact percentages of how much we're increasing it. Um, so instead of getting you hit, you know, hit all at once with that large increase, you get a small increase at this reading. And then. If, if everything holds and, you know, we go to town meeting, get approval, then we're gonna have to get the rest at the next reading. And that's all. Yeah, I mean, generally, I think that usually works better incremental, if we can, I agree with it, you know, which we thought of it a year ago or whatever, but uh. We are where we are. Um, but yeah, we can talk about it further. Okay. And then the only other thing with water and sewer, uh, Dennis and Amy may have to assist them, I'd, I'd like to. Maybe on a, every other meeting, um, start, ju- just kind of have it on the agenda and old business to talk about the account. And, and kind of monies in, monies out type of thing, not so much the balance. Um, but, you know, again, that came up at some of the meetings of, um, you know, are we or aren't we using any of that money for this project? And I told them we are not, you know, we want to continue our infrastructure improvements that we've been doing the last. Six, seven, eight years, we've done a lot of significant projects and, and paying them out of that enterprise fund. You know, and, and there was a member from FinCom on and our, um, last year our debt went down, I think over a hundred thousand dollars. Um, you know, whatever. You know, bonds or loans we were paying out, um, decreased, obviously. Um, and I think as a board, it's important for us to kind of under, you know, have that information, like I said, maybe every other meeting, we just go through it quick. You know, where's our debt going? And, and yes, we have to do a big increase and we have to pay for this, but we may look at it and. And, and a couple years after three or four readings and we say, you know what? We, we don't, we can drop it down a quarter. Because we got some of this debt coming off the books from. You know, the Route eighteen, Route fourteen water main project or. You know, we, we, we got the debt coming off for the water meters, you, you know, and, and paying off some of that debt that we've taken loans for. And, and, and just, you know, be aware of that. You know. We, we, we all pay the bills just like everyone else in town and I think, you know, as a board, that's. You know, something to just kind of. You know, keep on the. On the front burner.
I've gotten schedules, I've gotten schedules from Mary Beth before that show, you know, where, where we're at, you know, and um, I haven't gotten one lately. But that's, that's something she can give us that tells it, that will say what we're paying on right now and what, how, you know, how. How each loan runs out and uh, when it does.
Yeah, I mean, it, it. It, it's not just rates and, and, and paying this loan, it's, it's even projects, you know what I mean? So if we got some big stuff coming off the books and we want to do. You know, another project or, you know, some, some other upgrades, you know, a little more paving sidewalk, whatever. Um, you know, so. Um, I, I'm gonna try to. Put together maybe a format or some type of document that we can kind of just. Maintain and update and. Um, you know, have those numbers available to the board on a, you know. Even every three meetings or something like that, you know, on a quarterly basis. even every three meetings or something like that, you know, on a quarterly basis, to review that. So I'll work on that a little bit between now and the next meetings. Um, so anyone else, water sewer, force main, anybody, good?
You wanna say something about plow rates, or was that all set?
What, Ken? Sorry, you broke it up.
Oh, Bruce had sent out an article on the plow rates, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything on it, or if that was all set? Just a verbal email, or what?
Uh, we, we can talk about that if we're all, we're all set with the force man, and Bruce, I know, actually didn't make it to the agenda, do we?
I know, it didn't make.
Do we still need to do that, Bruce? Are you okay with the rates, or what's, what's your thoughts?
So I, I sent this out, I, you know, I just, like we talked before, we haven't gone up from the rates for a couple of years, and you know, after that one plowable event we had, I did get some feedback from our contractors, you know, did, oh, it didn't go up again this year, so I did another survey of comparable towns, and that's where you have the averages of those, and, you know, my proposed increases that I thought, you know, I was looking for the board to consider. Again, we, we don't want to be the highest paid, we're just looking to be around the middle somewhere, so that's my proposals kind of put us there. If I could get the board to vote for these increases, that'd be fine. You know, I didn't really go much up, if you look at it, on the, on the back hose, because frankly, I don't think there is, they're worth that much money in the snow plowing situation, as they normally would be, you know, if we're using the load or dig. As far as plowing, they usually have like a nine-foot plow on, they're not much different than using a one-ton truck.
So Bruce, the increases were small, like a buck here, or, or even a dollar an hour?
Yeah, the pickup truck was a dollar, the one ton, mostly I was trying to go up around $3 an hour on most of them. Again, just to stay with the local towns, I'm not trying to compare ourselves to any cities or towns that are far away. And that's it.
It's been two years, so we've gone through two winters at the current rates, this, this would have been the third winter?
Yes.
Okay. Any thoughts from the board? Anyone wanna make a motion?
I got the, I got the plow rates right in front of me, I make a motion that we accept them as printed by the superintendent.
I second it.
Okay, so we have a motion, second, any other further discussion? Take a vote, Dave. Speak, you're on mute.
All right, well, that, yeah.
Yeah.
Ken?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I'm yes. All right, you got your new rates, Bruce.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Uh, so we had Complete Streets on the, under the old business, I think just the update, Bruce sent out the plans just before the meeting. He's already told me he's got a few comments, and, and I guess I'll let the board review it at their free time, and you know, again, I think we got plenty of time, it's not gonna be, construction isn't gonna go till May or June. Bruce said their estimate. Yeah, around there, yeah. But we could still build it, we could still bid it in March and start it in April, it's a quick turnkey, so. I think any comments, Bruce did mention, I haven't looked at it, but the estimate was a little higher than the funding we have, so he's already looking at some things that we can do with our own department to lessen that cost. You know, they don't have any engineering services in there, you know, as far as on-site, I don't think we need that. You know, I think it's a pretty straightforward project, so. I don't know, Bruce, have you got anything else, or any other comments you wanted to add?
Yeah, so I know I sent that back, you know, late to everybody, but it's pretty straightforward, we're looking to go out to bid at the end of the month, we're gonna make some adjustment, adjustments that I requested as far as making some of those items alternates. Just so when we do get winning bid, we can remove them and not have them done if we don't want to, specifically some of the sidewalk work on the park side of Park Ave, which really wasn't part of the uh, project anyway, and you know, an additional catch space in there we're gonna add that, and which would require a trench across Park Ave, which I really don't want to do that, because it's a new road, we were trying to keep everything in the gutter. So just things like that, we'll see when the actual bid comes out, if, what we can include and not include, but I think I definitely will delete the trench going across Park Ave for that new catch base, and we can find a better way to route that water. In the, just to, I know Wayne was looking at probably the dates on there, those dates are tentative based on if we were just gonna, as far as sending requests for bids out, I think that was saying the end of this month, they might back up a week or so for that, but it shouldn't affect like the start date by too much, like Kevin said.
Mark, I don't know, this, this project, we got some funding from a state program to do this sidewalk intersection improvement, written from the police station there going up Park Ave, so we have, was it 370, Bruce, roughly?
Yeah, it was 378 was the grant to the reconfigure that whole intersection across from the police station, and I can tell you, I, my conference call today was with Jim Fitzgerald and another engineer from Ambiental Partners, and I sat in the truck and did the conference call at that intersection. It was a good dozen people that tried to cross there, and they were all different ways, some people came out of the cemetery, some people, so, you know, it just definitely showed the need, just as I was sitting there in a short period.
Yeah, it's needed, and this is something, you know, Bruce made numerous applications, we finally got awarded the, you know, the grant about a year or so ago, so it's nice, nice little project.
Hey Bruce, in this, in this spec hits is a loan borrow, $7,000. Can't they borrow that loan out of our pile?
Yeah, that's not exactly loan, but we use it as loan, yeah, it has to be screened, and we do have, yeah. You know, it, it's, it's, it's chips away at it, I agree, you know, same with, same with some of those other things I was gonna have them at, put as alternates, just kind of chip away at that large figure at the end there, try to get down a little bit safely. You know, but our crews, you know, as you know, are gonna be doing the saw cutting, the removal of the sidewalks, removal of the existing poured and pleased concrete, the removal of newer granite and, and placing it on the side of the road, so when they come in, they're gonna reuse that, the contractor will reuse that, so. Our guys, you know, gonna be doing some decent amount of work on this.
I was gonna say much less specific about that, just general landscaping, Bruce, I know you could probably handle some of these things, you know, the mulch, there's some tree protection, I think I saw.
Yeah, I was saying, I'm looking at the same things, Dave, the exact same things.
All right, well, let us know how much you want to do. Sounds good.
I think, yeah, if you got comments, get them back to Bruce, and I think so we're trying to wrap it up, what, for the end of the month, Bruce, that we can get a bid in February, is that the timeline?
Yes, and I, I sent that up to the procurement officer today, the town's procurement officer, for her review, just for the wording of the actual RFB, not so much the items, you know, that's not around, but just to make sure the wording is incorrect, and we're okay to go to put it out there.
And obviously, we're still doing, we do all paper bids, right?
Yes.
I don't know. I don't know if we've had to, if the towns had to bid any projects during COVID. Obviously, another question maybe to ask Lisa, just. You know, they, they can still do it and hand it in, we just may not be able to have a, you may have to record the opening just like this or something, you know, you may not be actually have, you may not be able to have people at the opening, I think we just maybe have her check with the state and get whatever policy procedure we have to follow for COVID.
Okay. Inquire about bid often.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, how they, how they do a bid openings, you know, for, you know, small towns, I mean, all, all the state agencies, it's all electronic now, so there hasn't been a bid opening for years, you just watch the computer.
Right.
But obviously, the, you know, I'm sure we're not the only town that's in, that has had to deal with it, you know, that still does actual openings. So.
Okay.
All right. Anything else, Complete Streets? You good? Something that's kind of similar to that, and only because I was involved with it with my company, the transportation bond bill just got passed last week, barely, at like four in the morning of the last day. And just, it's a fairly large package, so I don't know if you really, so the transportation bond bill basically is how the state decides to spend their transportation money, so they say we want to fund this project, or that project's, you know, large projects specifically get named, like the, you know, the extension of the commuter rail and things like that, that they're doing. And then they say, okay, we want to put X amount of money in chapter 90, X amount of money here, you know, and then it's how they divvy up all their, it's all through the transportation bond bill, they do it every year. And I haven't really read too much, I just saw the highlights, but two things that caught my eye was one, I believe there's additional funds for Complete Streets, and again, I don't know how soon we could get another grant, because we already have one. But they were increasing that, and something else I saw, which I hadn't seen before, was funds for state numbered routes that are maintained by small towns, or maintained by towns.
That would be all of ours.
Yeah, exactly. Except for the ones that they just rebuilt, so you know, obviously Route 14, Ken. You know, we're, we're gonna, I mean, hopefully, you know, the force main will take care of one side of Auburn Street, but it, it was just kind of in the highlights, you know, kind of the, the summary of the bond bill and what's in it. It's something that caught my eye. And, and you know, and it was that specific, you know, obviously, we have a town that deals with that.
That would be nice to get Route 14 from Washington to the intersection, uh, to school. That would be nice.
Yeah.
That's all right, you already told me the past four years, this coming year, we're just gonna do it.
Um, I guess Bruce, is, we must have, do we have any type of liaison at, at, I don't even think it's mass thought, I think it, it, you know, I don't know whether we just talk to our rep or our senator and see what, or is, do you have any contacts that could help us with that, or maybe?
Well, I, I can certainly dig into it, and I think Allison Sullivan, our rep, anytime I've reached out to her recently, she's, you know, she hasn't been there that long, she's been very helpful, so she was actually, she came down and, before we got the Complete Streets grant and reviewed our submission for that, and took a look at the project, so I'll reach out to her.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be good, I'm excited, that, that's something that definitely, anything to extend our chapter 90 money, or pave a few more roads, I think is you know, something worthwhile to look at, or at least investigate. So.
Sounds good, and I think our new town administrator starts February 8th, and I think in one of the me, first meetings I have with him, I think I'm gonna just put a bug in his ear about the tips program, that, you know, we've done some preliminary work on that, and it's something we could probably get with his help, get into the works, it takes six or seven years to get funding for that, but that's a major project for 27 and 58, so.
I did hear, I, I didn't watch all the interviews online, but I did hear something mentioned that, I think he was the one that brought up accepted roads, and, and things like that, that the, the number of non-accepted roads we have in the town, and obviously, if they're not accepted, we don't get the, the revenue for that, I don't know if anybody else had heard that.
I remember some guy bringing that up about a year ago.
And I think there was a guy that brought that up a couple of years before that, and a few other guys that that used to be on the board, that brought it up, and.
Exactly, we've had some progress on that front due to the fact that Dennis, Dennis was able to plans that have, that we could use to move forward to get some of these roads that aren't accepted, accepted, that for some reason we're missing, and they became available recently, last few weeks.
Yeah, just, gotta, gotta go through them.
Yep.
There was, you know, obviously, somebody did some legwork in the, in the past, but somehow, you gotta figure out where they dropped the ball at.
I don't know, anybody else got anything else, any new business? Commissioners? Bruce, Dennis, Amy? Bob, Dave? Open it up to anybody?
Got on this agenda here about the new DP building, the concept design. Is that any progress with that?
I think we're just on a status quo, we just, we keep it on the old business.
Yeah, we, we had a site meeting, I don't know if that was since our last meeting, we had a site meeting with ZAD and an architect, and he, he did a walkthrough with us, he looked at our facility, he's looked at the preliminary site plan that Cal Gavi had drawn up for us, the footprint, and he took took all our, you know, wants, the needs, and he was gonna work on it and get back to us for another meeting.
Yeah, they, they, we've signed that contract with the scope of what their design is, probably just might be worth it to see where he's at and get a timeline, you know, for projected dates, for what he can get us, and things like that. Is anything else, or? If there isn't, then I'll take a motion to adjourn if everyone's good.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Don't be so quick. All right, motion by Wayne, I think Ken was, seconded by Ken, to adjourn, Dave?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Ken?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I'm yes. All right, gentlemen, thank you very much, be safe.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, thank you. Good night, everybody.